December 19, 2017, 4:30 PM. The order, first item on the agenda is to consent agenda items.
I'll offer motion to approve those.
Second. We got a motion, second, to consent agenda items. Any discussion on any? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no. Motion carries. Item 2A, conduct a public hearing to consider a resolution approving with conditions the final plat of Drex- or Dec- Drexman, I should say, second edition located at 2122 to 2136 North Highland Avenue.
Dave Schnobruck, Community Development Director, members of the city council. First off, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the plat at their November 30th, 2017 meeting. This is one lot. It's generally located north of North Garden Street, east of North Highland Avenue. The property is, has been rezoned to B2, and the property is intended to accommodate, you know, a storage units that are currently located to the east. In addition to the conditions that have been identified in the report, we should, there should be one additional condition, and that is that to date, the owner has not provided us with proof of ownership of the property, which is a requirement of the city code in order to prove the plat. That determination is ultimately made by the city attorney, and so they should be required to do that as well.
Thank you.
Have you heard any complaints, any letters against this at all?
No.
The public hearing, anybody in the audience like to be heard?
Hearing none, I'll offer motion to close the public hearing and offer resolution, waive the reading, approving with conditions the final plat of Drexman second edition located 2122, 2136 North Highland Avenue.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, to close the public hearing, offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion?
Mr. President, council, the conditions would be the four identified in the agenda plus the fifth item mentioned by Mr. Schnobruck, which would be providing our office with evidence of the title of the property. Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, Finance Director, please call roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 3A, consider motion approving the gravel pit license for a period beginning January 1st, 2018, and ending December 31st, 2018.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no. Motion carries. Item 3B, consider motion approving the issuance of a temporary on sale intoxicated liquor license for the State Street Theater Company.
I'll move it.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, that's for February 3rd, or 2nd, 2018, and Saturday, February 3rd, 2018. Got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no. Motion carries. Item 3C, consider a motion approving the issuance of a bread and breakfast license for the period beginning January 1st, 2018, and ending December 31st, 2018.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no. Motion carries. Item 4A, report from the city engineer regarding the proposed 2018 capital improvement program. Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have a 37-page report of recommended improvements for the fiscal year 2018. It's quite a bit of information. In addition to the report, there's a couple of maps attached with the existing roadway condition and the location map of the proposed locations. I guess my plan would be to briefly describe the recommended improvements. Assistant City Engineer Statheim has some layouts of a couple areas that we'd like to share with the city council regarding roadway improvements. I'll give you some estimated cost and bonding information, and then if you have any questions, I'll try and answer those as well. Probably the easiest way to get going here is, would be to start on page 18 of the report, which is page 49 of your agenda packet. Give you a second to get to that. That has the listing of the recommended improvements for 2018, starting with 2018 utility street and alley project. The first one on the list is Cottonwood Street from Butternut to 250 feet south of Ridgewood Drive. That's roadway, concrete sidewalk, and recreational trail improvements. Mr. Statheim has that up on the screen. Basically, Butternut is just west of the Cottonwood River Bridge. That segment of roadway was, had a temporary pavement put on it in 2001. We've got some weeping groundwater conditions and some issues that we need to deal with. We need to extend storm sewer up the hill to deal with that as well. So that would be part of the improvements that are not exactly listed on that sheet. So, starting down on the east end toward Broadway, you can see Butternut. This is a high-resolution overlay of the existing conditions, and then we put our recommended improvements on it. I think we've got a 10-foot recreational trail on the Cottonwood River side, or what we call the north side, and a six-foot wide sidewalk on the south side. We're recommending a 34-foot face-to-face roadway improvement throughout that section. We don't anticipate a lot of parallel parking, but does provide two 10-foot driving lanes and two seven-foot parking lanes. As you, we traverse to the west, we continue up a hill that will be extending storm sewer. And I can probably go up, and you can see, along the way, we've got some temporary construction easements we'll need to require, and a few areas where we'd like to acquire some additional right-of-way. As that area has been plotted out, we've gone from a 60-foot right-of-way to an 80-foot right-of-way. So, right there, you can kind of see a small strip and a couple areas we need to get a little more right-of-way. So as you continue to the west, we're going to continue with that section up the hill that, where the cursor is at, is Ridgeville Dr- Ridgeview Drive. We'll continue 250 feet south of that and terminate that segment about halfway up the hill, or about where we, we think we can deal with that water situation. And then the next one on the list is Ridge Road, Ridgeview Drive, which ties into this as well. We're proposing a 36-foot wide street there with, provides parking on both sides, five-foot wide sidewalk throughout and around the cul-de-sac. One thing that we were recommending, and we had to do in that location on the cul-de-sac, was to shrink that to a 30-foot radius to deal and match some of the grades, the elevation changes that are present in that cul-de-sac area. We can still get, you know, regular vehicles, cars and pickups to make that, that radius quite easily. So, shouldn't be an inconvenience, and there's very little traffic in that cul-de-sac. So that's, that's the first two on the list. The next one is Jefferson Street from 5th to 7th North. This is a full underground reconstruction and roadway reconstruction as well. Jefferson Street on the north end of town, we'll have to continue that in a few years to come. These two blocks fit well because of the way the sanitary sewer and water main systems lie in that area. Then we go on to Sarah Hills Third Edition, which is a housing subdivision that's been graded and gravelled. It's located between Maplewood Drive and Airport Road, east of North Highland Avenue. A few of these streets have some severe, or some pretty good grade to them, and we have issues with stormwater washing the gravel down. So we'd like to get in there and pave that and add, add the sidewalk improvements as well. The next one is Oakwood Avenue from North Highland Avenue to Hazelwood. This is just a roadway reconstruction, one of the last areas up on top of the hill that we need to deal with. The next four alleys have all been petitioned for, as initial alley improvements are pretty straightforward. Couple of them need some storm sewer extensions. Then the next one is 20th North Street and Front Street. We'd like to add some water main, sanitary sewer main, and a sanitary sewer lift station in that area. It's not currently served by water or sewer. We've been working with the Public Utilities Commission to develop those plans and share the cost of those improvements as well. Then the next one is Birchwood Drive, Turner Road, and Maplewood Drive, and Fariah's 5th. Want to construct the final Batuminus wear course, and we've got a little bit of pedestrian sidewalk infill. This was constructed privately by a developer and a contractor. They elected to leave the last lift of wear course off, and we'd come back in and specially assess that back to the, to the adjoining parcels. And the last one, we've got a couple little areas of settlement on Summit Avenue from the 2012 improvement project. We'd like to go back in and remove and replace a couple alley areas, it'll only be a couple thousand dollars. So that's the 2018 USA Improvement Project. The next is the 2018 MSAS Project, which is areas in the city where we can use our state gas tax money. We're proposing to reconstruct German Street from 3rd to 7th North Street, full underground utilities, concrete sidewalk, and roadway recon- reconstruction as well. We have met with the Baseball Association, the Park and Rec Department, and the three area athletic directors, and, and shared these proposed plans with them, and they all seemed receptive and happy that was something was going to be done, be done in that area. At the same time, 7th North Street will be done by MINDOT next summer. It may seem a little odd to do it all at the same time, but we think the traffic will be decreased, and it's a good time to get in there and get these improvements done before the Baseball Association has some big tournaments in a couple years. So Joe, maybe you want to go through the proposed layout, beginning at 3rd North there?
Yep. Joseph Statheim, Assistant City Engineer. Like Steve said, we feel this would be an opportunity to do a little bit of pedestrian safety enhancements along this corridor for the Johnson and Johnson Ballpark and football field area. So, starting at 3rd North, right here on the upper left of the screen, everything starting at that point would remain as-is with the roadway reconstruction. There'd be selective sidewalk replacements in the areas for sewer and water end services. As we move to the north, towards 4th North, we would, we're proposing to do a pedestrian bump-out at that intersection, and along with the bump-out, we would keep the curb extended through the intersection to the end of the grandstand area for Johnson Football Field, which is on the lower, lower left there. Purpose of that would be to provide more of a plaza-type area, for lack of a better term, we'll call it a plaza area, to help with the pedestrian and spectator as they come to the ticket booth for that pedestrian stacking, as they're getting tickets, and then for dismissal after the game, when there's that influx of spectators that leave the facility, and there's really not that much sidewalk room at that location as it sits now. So this will provide more of a safe area for pedestrians to disperse, move to their vehicles, and leave the gaming area. Continuing north, past the football grandstands, the curb drops back to the normal 40-foot width, and then between the football field and the baseball field, we're proposing to do ADA compliant on-street parking. Right now, there are two mark stalls for the football field and two mark stalls for the baseball field. However, those stalls, as they sit right now, are not compliant. There's not the proper drop-off area and pedestrian access ramping that's required. So with the, with the proposed improvements, the curb would bump out an additional five feet. That would provide the access aisle, which has got that crosshatch right here with the three mark stalls, and that would provide the ADA accessibility guidelines to get to the sidewalk, and then travel to either the football field or baseball field. In talking with the Baseball Association and the athletic directors, they, since both facilities aren't used at the same time, they felt that would, the number of stalls would be appropriate for the visitors that they have to their sporting events. And then we continue to the north, and we jog the curb back out for another, another bump-out and plaza area at 5th North, or at the ticketing area for Johnson Field. And then continue that bump-out through the intersection of 5th North, where we will taper it back into a 40-foot street. Then as we continue to the north through 6th, everything would remain as-is, as it currently sits through, through 6th North up to where we would connect in with the state highway project at 7th.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Then the next item on the list is the 2018 surface reconstruction project. This is work done by city forces, the street department. This list and location is put together with the input from the Public Works Superintendent, Kurt Curry. He's got a, developed a five-year list, so we just continue along those lines unless we tweak it a little bit every year, but we've got 2nd South from Washington to Payne, three blocks; 3rd South from State to Jefferson, three blocks; 6th South from Broadway to Washington, two blocks; 11th South from Broadway to Franklin, three blocks; and 17th North from Washington to Franklin Street, one block, for a total of 12 blocks. This is areas where we don't have to do any underground reconstruction at this time, and very little curb and gutter renewal as well. Then we get into two 2018 MINDOT projects. The first one is Highway 1568 Landscape Project. It's a follow-up to the mill and overlay from this past summer, where they reca- where they milled, and they took out about, I think, 30 trees or so. And so they're replacing the trees that they removed, and then we have an opportunity to do some infill. I think we've got about 40, 44 trees that we're going to put back in. It's a relatively inexpensive project, about $20,000, $22,000 is an estimate. We can use our state aid funds for that as well. Then the next one is the bigger one of the highway, of the MINDOT projects, Highway 1415, what they call the Gateway Project, from Broadway to Nickle County 21, Highway 1415 intersection. Got underground utilities within the city limits, storm sewer reconstruction, roadway, residential trail, and then the state has bridge and highway reconstruction as well. So the summary of those are, the cost estimates are following right there. We have a total summation of $5.65 million for next year's improvement project. The sheet prior to this, or the page prior to this, has an estimated tabulation of special assessments. You can see of the $5.65 million, I'm estimating about a million of it, or 20% of it would be specially assessed. Then probably, jumping to page 5 of the report, we'll show you the funding sources and estimate of bonding need, if I can get there. 5 of the report, 36 of your agenda item. Toward the bottom, it's, there's Section 2 Funding Sources, projected bonding need. We've got summation of estimated dedicated funding of just under $3 million. We subtract that from the $5.65 estimated cost, add 1% contingency for materials testing and whatever else may pop up. We had an estimated cost to issue a, to issue the bonds of about $50,000. Gives us just under $2.8 million in projected bonding need. So that's the nuts and bolts of the report. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions this time.
Anybody have a question?
I don't have a question, just a quick comment. Move to page 38 on the, on your computer screen. Talks about failed streets, or it's something that we all kind of keep a close track of. And back in 2010, you know, we had 30 miles within our city of failed streets, and if you look at last year, now we're wrapping all the way down to 15, less than half of where we were at 2010. So, my compliments to our city staff and city engineer folks to get rid of those failed streets. That's one of the big complaints we get in the public, is how bad streets are, and so we're knocking it down. So, thank you. It's good work by that department.
Anybody else?
I guess maybe I'd just like to add, in front of Johnson Field, that is our first bump-out for traffic calming in our community then, this will be?
Counselor, Mr. President, with the exception of downtown Minnesota Street, we've, we've had those for several years, but I believe you're correct in, with regard to that. I, I may add also that this recommended improvements went before the Safety Commission with regard to the New Ulm Complete Streets Policy, and they have recommended approval of the program as well.
Slowing down that area is important. I used to live right directly across from Johnson Park, and boy, the squealed tires and the, I know last few years they've had sandwich boards, that's really helped to slow traffic down, but, boy, a long time ago, that was like a raceway across there with, and those games and the little kids, and I was always nervous somebody was going to get hit there, so I'm glad we're doing that.
Anybody else?
I'll offer motion to adopt the proposed state 2018 capital improvement program, acknowledge receiving the engineers' report.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no. Motion carries. Item 5A, thank you. Item 5A, consider motion approving the city of New Ulm Emergency Operation Plan, which provides a framework for the city personnel to manage the emergency events to ensure the protection of the public from the effects of potential hazards. I almost butchered that one. Dave, you have anything on that one?
Mr. Council President, members of the council, Dave Borkert, I'm the Emergency Management Director for the city of New Ulm. I had been here the last council meeting, and at that time, it was, the emergency operation plan was tabled. Since then, I met with the city attorney and city manager, and we just talked over a few things, some, basically, there's just a few things that we changed around just slightly, and I had mailed everyone a, a copy of the, the changes by US mail. Primarily, like one thing, for example, very simple changes, but like the line of succession. When we were doing it, there, there wasn't a Assistant City Manager position at that point, so that was one, one change that we had as far as roles and responsibilities. And then just certain kind of minor changes from changing the Emergency Management Director's role to primary versus support in, in certain areas. So, you know, I'd certainly be willing to address any questions or anything that you have, but, but primarily, that, that was it. Mr. Hippert's here as well, as well as Mr. Gromit's. Have I pretty much captured that as far, is there anything else you'd like to add as far as our, our meeting, Mr. Hippert?
Mr. President, no. I think that Commander Borkert's adequately summed up the, we just had a few changes that we wanted to talk them about, and he's incorporated those, so I think the proposal would be the original manual, which was on the agenda last time with these changes. Correct?
Correct. And Mr. Council President, Mr. Hippert, as far as those, those changes, that, that conversation, I had provided you a copy, that, everything was incorporated in here. You had gotten back to me, but it's satisfactory.
Absolutely, sure.
Where's this published, Mr. Borkert? Where does, where's this kept at?
We have a, a copy of it at the, at the fire department. That would be one of our, that's, that's our primary, the one on 8th North, that's our primary emergency operations center. And then we have, you know, upon request, we certainly have copies available.
For some, for security reasons, I'm assuming that's why it's not public, right?
Correct. If we had, if we had gotten a public data request, like through Chapter 13, I, I would certainly be conferring with Mr. Hippert as far as releasing anything, because there are certain things in there that I would consider private.
Yep, I would too.
We'd certainly have to redact.
Sure. With that, I'm going to offer motion to approve the emergency operation plan.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any more discussion?
Thank you for your work on that.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no. Motion carries. Item 5B, receive a communication from Heidi Rasmann of the Community Housing Development Corporation notifying the city that their application for the housing tax credits has been approved by the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, and as a result, that the city staff will proceed with preparation of the tax increment financing district for the project. Dave?
Members of the city council, at your June 6th meeting, it's past summer, you approved three resolutions that supported the application of the Community Housing Development Corporation to, or as for housing tax credits to facilitate the construction of 55 units of affordable housing in the former New Ulm Middle School. It was also referred to as the State Street Apartment Project. In one of the resolutions, you expressed an intent to establish a tax increment financing district for the project. The Minnesota Housing Finance Agency has awarded the Community Housing Development Corporation tax credits for this project. They have taken the step of now purchasing the property and are proceeding with the steps necessary to start construction. Because of the length of some of the approvals that they need to secure, it won't take place. They anticipate construction taking place in November of 2018. So, in order for them to close on their tax credit financing, it's necessary for the tax increment financing district to be in place. It's something their lenders want to see, so consequently, the staff will be proceeding with the steps necessary to do that.
Thank you. Not entertain a motion, received communications?
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no. Motion carries. Item 5C, consider resolution adopting the final 2018 budget of the city of New Ulm totaling $22,166,072 with a total property tax levy of $7,223,672, and the city of New Ulm net property tax levy of $7,66,672.
I'll offer resolution reflecting that motion.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, offer resolution, waived reading, any more discussion on it?
Good work by all the departments, and city staff, and city council. Lot of work.
Any more questions concerned? Seeing none, Finance Director, please call the roll.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 5D, consider approving the 90% design and, of the HD upgrade of the council chambers and AV equipment from Morcom. Go ahead.
There we go. All right. So, NUCAD has been working with an AV consultant, Morcom, to create the design for the upcoming upgrades to the AV equipment here in the council chamber. The design is updating all of the cameras, as well as the presentation equipment. We have a layout here of the room, and it shows all of the new locations for the presentation equipment. Our plan is to replace some of the monitors and include some new ones. So, we currently have a monitor over there. So, we'll be upgrading that to a fifty-five inch monitor, as well as providing a monitor on this side of the room. We'll be leaving the Samsung there, and then, for the audience, we'll be getting a larger screen that will be angled down towards the audience. And then, we're planning on providing another dropdown with a couple of monitors to showcase the program and presentation over, in replacing the older monitor there. The rest of the design shows all of the different connections that will be required, and the PTZ cameras that we'll be getting as well. We'll be replacing the standard F cameras with HD cameras, and we'll be keeping the locations of the cameras and sticking with four. The design does come with the ability to include additional cameras in the future if needed.
Zoom in on you.
Is there any questions?
I think at our meeting last week, we talked about, you know, what we have here are old plasma televisions. So, these were here, I think, when I was here in '09, and we'll be moving to now is the high definition. And people from home, and when they watch NUCAD, some places, they can't read our names or still not that clear that people expect when they look at their other television shows. So, we're going to finally bring that up to a level that we need to be at. And the cameras, I hear, twenty, some are twenty years old.
These cameras aren't, but...
Oh, the other ones, well, we're going to be talking about.
We'll get to those cameras, yep. But these are an older technology currently, so it's just going to be a lot sharper. And a lot of people, you know, at home have HD televisions, so it's going to look a lot better on their...
Any timetable for this, Steve?
I'm hoping within...if approved today, we'll be able to put this out for bid and have it done within, you know, the first couple of months of 2018.
With that, I'm going to offer a motion to move this forward.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. Thank you. Item five B, consider resolution accepting twelve-hundred-dollar grant from the National Recreation and Parks Association for a fit and strong physical activity program to train fitness instructor. As you read on your sheet here, the council authorized Park and Rec to submit for the grant. The Park and Rec Commission asked me, recommended the council to authorize for the grant. So, I'm going to offer the resolution, waive the reading, authorize acceptance of a twelve-hundred-dollar grant from the National Recreation and Parks Association for training and fitness instructor to offer the fit and strong physical activity program.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, offer a resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six A, consider resolution accepting donations from the Citizens Bank of Minnesota to be used toward a shop for a hero program.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, accepting that two-hundred-dollar donation from Citizens Bank.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, offer a resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six B, consider resolution designated annual community celebrations as the community events for the year 2018.
I'll offer the motion.
Second. We got a motion and a second, and that's Bavarian Blast, Bach Fest, Flushing, Hermanfest, Hermanfest, I should say, Mayfest, and Oktoberfest. No more discussion? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six C, consider offer from the State of Minnesota Department of Natural Resources for an aerial deer herd survey count in the early 2000, or spring of 2018.
Mr. Gromit?
You know, the city had been contacted by Minnesota DNR. The city of Mankato is requesting a survey be done in their community while the helicopter is in this part of the state. They were asking if we would also be interested in paying for the survey. The DNR is not interested in counting their own deer on their own dime, and the cost per hour for operating the helicopter is five hundred dollars, five hundred and eighty dollars. We would have to agree to a two-hour maximum. Could be less than that, but that would be the maximum. But it also includes the travel time from Mankato and probably, I don't know, back to St. Paul. I'm not sure how the actual cost...I threw an extra, I threw an extra hour in there for travel time. So, if we were interested in doing it, it would cost us about eighteen hundred dollars to count about a hundred and forty-five deer. They would be interested in expanding the count, you know, down to the Minnesota River. They expanded it last time to include the hospital hillside bluff. Otherwise, they were just counting everything in Flanders on the Cottonwood Riverside. Then they started counting it all the way down by Cottonwood Street, all the way up to, you know, Seventeenth North on Garden. And so, they would kind of look at the other areas of the community, which potentially, instead of being less than eighteen hundred dollars, would either be eighteen hundred dollars or more, because they're going to spend more time flying the other areas of the community. I guess my recommendation is, you know, if you look at the statistics of the deer hunt, we're basically on track of every, the last few deer hunts are probably going to be in that sixty to seventy deer taken for the year, which is pretty consistent. You know, if we were up in the nineties, then we may want to know what's going on. How many more deer do we have? But the actual city deer hunt is right on track as with last year. So, you know, without knowing specifically how many deer are in town, there's still a bunch of them, you know. I see them, you see them all over town. But I don't know that we benefit from knowing how many. The DNR has been willing to allow us to go from fifty to fifty-six hunters. Our problem is locations. How many locations do we have where you can actually put a hunter? We've kind of maxed out, you know, there might be a couple other spots that we could probably slide a hunter into. But in order to keep the hunters at least far apart so they're not looking at each other, you know, during the day, we just don't have a lot of locations. The hunt does not go across the river south, you know, into Flanders State Park. It only is held within the corporate boundaries of the city of New Ulm. So, any Flanders Park that's in the city, we can hunt, and that's fine. But Flanders State Park is bigger, and, you know, deer tend to go where there's not as much pressure, so it's very possible that they get pushed out to the area they're not being hunted in. And, you know, we don't really see those deer until they come back into town after the hunt. So, I guess my recommendation is, I don't see any value for eighteen hundred dollars to do this. If you wish to do it, we can sign the contract, but I'm not seeing an uptick in the numbers of deer being taken. So, I'm not really too convinced that we really, you know, we really need a count. We actually got an artificial count by the number of deer that the hunters actually see. And if that's consistent with past years, then probably there's no uptick in the number of deer.
I'm going to offer a motion to decline.
Second.
The survey for 2018.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I guess I'd just like to ask Brian, I mean, previously in 2011, did we pay for a study?
Yes, we did.
And then, what kind of money was it back then? Just curious.
Three hundred dollars, and we never got billed for it.
Okay.
We agreed to pay it, and they just never sent us a bill.
Sure.
You know, so...
There's no chance of that this time, huh?
What's that?
There's no chance they'll forget this time.
Yeah, there's no chance. Well, they offered this a couple of years ago when we said, you know, we haven't had a survey, and we couldn't justify it a couple of years ago, the additional cost. Even by sharing the cost with the city of Mankato to get the helicopter and the pilot out, doesn't really change the numbers dramatically.
Mr. President, the statute of limitations on that 2011 bill is six years, so I think we're home free.
We got a couple of weeks, we got another week.
Well, but that's what was happening prior to 2011, too, is, you know, we'd all agree, you know, we'd agree on the number, that three hundred bucks, you know. And at one point, they used to take this as a city manager up and count the deer. And then, they said, okay, non-state employees can't be in the helicopter, and then the price started going up, and we've just not done it, have done it since.
Maybe we can ask Santa Claus in a couple of years to count, as long as he's zipping over town.
I guess I support not doing the study in 2018. I think we've been adequate in trying to increase the hunting locations, and if you're saying it's consistent, we're looking at it and paying attention to it, so keep up the good work.
Okay. No more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Was it a resolution?
No.
No, just a regular... I'm sorry, I already had one to add.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. Item six D, consider resolution approving the MinDOT Agency Delegated Contracting Process Agreement Number 1029984 relative to the federally funded projects. Mr. Gallo?
Thank you, Mr. President. This agreement allows MinDOT to act as the city's agent in accepting federal aid for transportation projects. An example of that is, we've been programmed to receive seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand to reconstruct Fifth North Street in fiscal year 2019. So, we will have to ratify and sign this agreement if we want to utilize these federal funds.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second. We got a motion and a second, offer a resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six E, consider resolution approving the Cooperative Construction Agreement Number 1029554 with the State of Minnesota for Project 0805-116 to plant trees on Trunk Highway 15.
Mr. Gallo?
Thank you, Mr. President. As currently mentioned in the capital improvement memorandum, the state is proposing to do a landscape project next summer to replace the trees on the Mill and Overlay project from this summer. And this will allow us to piggyback and plant some, infill some trees, and they will replace the ones that, most of the ones that they removed as part of the project. We've got an estimated cost of twenty thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, and as I mentioned, we can use state aid funding to cover that cost.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
No. I'll offer a resolution, waive the reading to approve the Cooperative Construction Agreement Number 1029554 with State of Minnesota Department of Transportation for Project 0805-116 to plant trees on Trunk Highway 15. Authorize the city manager and finance director to sign the agreement.
Second. We got a motion and a second, offer a resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six F, consider purchase of equipment from the B&amp;H to upgrade camera equipment at the NUCAD studio.
All right. This is the old cameras.
These are the old cameras. So, NUCAD currently is operating with cameras that, you know, date back to, we had gotten used in 2008 when NUCAD was created, and kind of did some research to figure out when they came from. They were designed in 1994. So, they're standard F cameras. They still work well, but they are designed for an older technology of presenting in standard F. And so, NUCAD is looking to move into HD, so we're going to need to upgrade all of our equipment in the studio as well. Mike here has put together a, he's our production technician for NUCAD, and he's put together a design for the updates, so he's going to be presenting that for you today.
So, I've been very sick the last couple of days, so bear with me here. What we're going to do is, we're going to take what we have currently set up as a two-camera studio system, replace both of our current cameras with Blackmagic Studio Cameras that are about sixteen hundred dollars a piece. They're top-of-the-line studio cameras, broadcast equipment. And then, we're also going to add a third camera in, which will be utilized in the studio space, as well as being able to be taken into a mobile environment, shooting PSAs and programs, and be able to use it for parades and stuff like that. And we're replacing our current standard definition switching software and switching device, which is this brick. It's a Sony Anycast, it's more than a couple of years old. It's only an analog system. It's not, doesn't have integrated graphics, doesn't have a bunch of necessary modern features with a Blackmagic Studio ATM switcher, which is top-of-the-line, like, entry-level price point. It's got about, it's about a thousand dollars. It's full HD, comes with its own switching software, integrated graphics. We'll be able to produce much more complicated and quality programs in studio. This design here is basically just a wiring diagram of how everything's going to work. We're going to be changing out what we currently have, which, if you see here, is just kind of like a lump of old equipment that is mostly so large because equipment back then was just, it was large. And a lot of what we're going to be replacing with is much smaller form factor, higher quality. It just looks a lot better. This is basically what it's going to look like after we're done. We're going to have new monitors, it's all going to be streamlined, and it'll be much more usable and user-friendly for public and for us. This is sort of a breakdown of the cameras. They're reliable, high-quality, they have a really low price point for this type of camera, like, just, it's game-changing in terms of the market. Like, twenty years ago, you would have been paying more than this for those cameras that we have now by like a wide margin. Those cameras are probably ten, twenty grand when we bought them. This is sixteen hundred bucks, and it's a much better camera. It's compatible with some of our existing equipment, so we don't have to replace everything, which is great. Saves a lot of money there. The studio switcher, again, really low price point. It's expansion-ready, so if we do end up wanting to change things in the future, it's easy to plug and play. This is a very reliable company with a huge footprint in the market, and they have a lot of equipment that's just very easy to interchange. Just some more images of the, back to the updates. And do we have any questions about this?
Counselor, just a comment, too, at our commission meeting, one of the individuals on our commission knows this technology very well and was very impressed, saying this is really where we need to go, and certainly has more knowledge in this area than I do, and was very impressed of what we got. and was very impressed of what we got put together and what's been brought in front of you today. It is and within budget. We had $25,000 budget for this, it's coming in at 23,200. So, with that, I'm going to offer a motion to approve the purchase of equipment.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. Thank you. Item 6G, consider carrying over $20,000 from the 2017 NewCAD budget for the purchase of high-definition content server and installation in 2018.
All right, so the final component of, you know, we're going to be updating the council chamber equipment and the NewCAD studio equipment. To present the HD video, we need an HD content server. So, the previous content server that was purchased in 2013 is specifically designed for standard definition inputs and outputs. So, if we were not to upgrade the content server at this point, we would have to downconvert all of the footage that we would be recording. So, it'd be kind of, you know, a bit of a down, bit of a downer not to be able to have all of this footage at its full capability. The content server is, you know, expected to come out about $17,000. I have one bid insofar at that price point, I'm still waiting to get a couple more bids and so that's why I'm requesting the money to be saved for 2018 because I don't have all of the bids in at this point, so...
Mr. President, in the past, don't we normally do this kind of all in one meeting?
Carryovers are in February, yep.
Are we okay to...
He's a little ahead of the game.
Oh, okay. He's a little ahead of the game, but we could still approve it tonight if we wanted to.
Right. I think the idea is that this is a whole package of products that we're buying and if you don't, if you approve the first two set of packages and you don't approve this, it's kind of null. So, in order to just, you know, authorize that everything is going to work as it should...
It's going to require a lot of, everything kind of coming in together at the same time to switch over, so that's...
I don't see any reason why you can't before we do the major...
With that, I'm going to make a motion to approve this request for up to $20,000.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6I, consider motion approving release of requests for proposals to obtain proposals for a five-year contract for audit services. Nicole?
Did I jump over one? Oh, let's go back to. 6H, consider resolution accept donations offered to the city for the Park and Recreation Department for identified purposes.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, to accept the donations. You want them all read into the record or...
Go for it.
$120 cash from Sven and Jean Alma, $120 cash from James and Janice Seifert, $120 in cash from Dwayne and Diane Lombrich, $120 cash from Maureen and Christina Dezuza, $120 cash from Jay and Alan Van Kira, $120 in cash from Greg Thomas, $120 in cash from Sanjay Kamor Mishra and Venita Mishra, and $120 in cash from Robert and Gaila Randweiler. And then for the German Park Paverstone improvements, $100 cash from Lisa and Terry Cook. And the Dogwater Park Infrastructure, $320 cash from Cashwise Liquor and $100 cash from Thomas Larson.
Thank you all.
Editors will be in the mail in the morning.
That away, Mayor. So, we do have a motion, offer resolution waived reading? Okay, any more discussion?
Didn't get a second.
Yeah, was there a second?
Yep.
Second.
Now we do. We have a motion and a second, offer resolution waived reading. Any more discussion? Seeing none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Now we'll go to item 6I, consider motion approving the release for, request for proposals to obtain proposals for a five-year contract for audit services. Nicole?
Mr. President, counselors, this is just a repeat again of what we did in 2013. We've kind of gotten into the cycle of going out for bids for some of these services every five years. Abdo Aiken Myers has been our auditor since 2009, I believe. They won the bid in 2013 to do all of the audits up through this year. So, they'll do those and they generally will follow and will do the Relief Association and the EDA as well, but the proposal does ask to have those bid, or have it bid without those in case those associations would choose to go with another auditor.
I'll move it.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. For some reason, this one don't come up on my computer. Consider resolution to accept the Minnesota Office of Justice programs to grant an amount of $5,000 to be used by the New Ulm Police Department for sex trafficking prevention initiatives focused on local investigation and training purposes.
This is not on our...
It's not on ours either.
There's not a bookmark, but there is a page there for it if you scroll all the way through your agenda.
Okay.
There's a thing for it.
Okay.
It just didn't get bookmarked.
Oh, yeah.
There it is. That's why I didn't hit.
No bookmark?
Got to end it some way. It's a resolution?
Yes.
It's a resolution, I'll move it.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, offer resolution waived reading. Any more discussion? Seeing none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. With no more business, I'd like to wish everybody out there that's watching us a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year from the City Council. See you next year. Meeting adjourned.